Call of March 5th, Broken Arrow City Council Meeting to Order.
No.
Start with invocation. Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. Let's all pray together. Father, we pause before this meeting tonight thanking you right now because of the Creator that you are. Father, we're thanking you as citizens of this community, thanking you, Father, for the unity that's shared among members, among law enforcement. Father, thank you for the faith community that's present as well, and, Father, we give you the credit for that. Thank you, Father, for the way that you work. We pause and ask you, God, for discernment, for wisdom, as counselors make decisions that are pertinent and appropriate to our citizens today. Father, I'm praying for them and asking, God, that you will give them an abundance of wisdom and help them as they deal with that. Father, I'm praying for those that are making presentations tonight, God, that you would give them words to be able to communicate by. Father, we thank you for first responders that are present tonight. Father, always for the sacrifice that they make. We are grateful for that incredible community that we have in them. And, Father, we want to pause and thank you for just the good things that we, as a community, have. Father, for the way that you've blessed us, for the way that you have presented so many good opportunities before us. And we also, Father, want to pray right now for families that have lost loved ones recently. Father, for those that are hurting and grieving right now as a community, we stand beside them and we ask on their behalf that you would be especially close to them. Thank you for that. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Please stand, join Councilor Lester in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed?
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Question second. Roll call, please. Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 7 is public hearings, appeals, presentation, recognitions, and awards. 7A, presentation on the Nashville Street Economic Development Road Project. Alex?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Alex Mills, Engineering and Construction Director. I'm here for you, before you tonight, to give you an update on the Nashville Street project. If we can pull up the first, yeah, that'll work. This project was started in June 4th of 2018, and we completed the project January 4th of 2019. The contract price was $1.5 million. It is a new industrial collector street. It's approximately 2,600 linear feet, and it runs from 9th, about a half a mile back, to a cul-de-sac. It's on the south side of the new Alpha Laval development. It is an eight-inch concrete pavement street with eight inches of aggregate base. It has two lanes for the roadway, not including the three lanes at 9th Street, and there's a cul-de-sac at the end of the road as a turnaround. Now, the hope is there's some industrial, prime industrial property to the east of there. Hopefully, that'll develop at some point, and we can expand that road and continue on into that industrial area. It has an underground storm collection system. We did have an agreement with ODOT for reimbursement of up to $1.4 million. We're working on the invoice right now. I'm in contact with them. We had $500,000 of STCI money, I believe, for this project. We spent that on the design, and we bought the waterline materials ourselves, and our in-house forces installed that waterline. It runs the entire length of the road from 9th, and it ties onto an existing waterline that is on that east end. So it'll help, not only for the Alpha Laval project, but it'll help for other development in the area. I'd like to bring up our construction manager, Tim Robbins. We have a drone that I'm not allowed to fly, and they made that very clear. I'm not allowed to fly. And we would like to show you some video of the area.
Evening. So when we start up, tell you what, can we go to the presentation first, the PDF? What we want to do is show you the image of where we were started off at. So what I'm showing here is a silhouette of what the street that we have constructed us of today as it laid back in March of last year. So you can kind of see the areas that we had to go through in quite open area, undisturbed to start up with. Let's go onto the video. So we're starting back here on the backside next to the cul-de-sac. There we go. So some of the unique things is we're kind of watching, the unique things that we had to deal with on this project was, as Alex mentioned, we're dealing with a lot of different entities that's going through here. So we had to construct the waterline there on your north side of the road, as well as construct the road and coordinate with the Alpha Laval construction crews. As you see, all the dirt work done on the, on the north side there, that was for some storm drainage basins, and as well as the new facility for Alpha Laval. So the coordination through this was extremely critical with all the parties trying to come to one. So, you know, a lot of the compliment on the successful completion of this project really goes to all three crews, with the city utility crews, the Crossland Heavy Construction crews, our CAs, Chad Nichols, and our coordination with the Alpha Laval contractors.
And our Development Services Group were very integral in helping us on this project.
So as you see here, they're still in the completion of the Alpha Laval spaces where we're tying into their parking. As of today, that parking is all complete, and we're starting to backfill on all that. We had to cut into the dirt to the hillside there to kind of blend, make a nice blend into the street. You decide to see these nice new retaining walls there on the edges, so. But it was a very successful project. The contractor was excellent on it, and all parties involved was just, it was a wonderful project.
No action, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I assume that the road was designed for heavier gross-weight vehicles?
Yes, it was. And not only that, but also size in terms of the turning radiuses and whatnot.
Right, and so that was my question on the cul-de-sac on the end, is it designed for semi?
Indeed, yes. We actually got the design vehicle of Alpha Laval. It turned out to be near the top end of what we would have designed for anyway, so it would, it will accommodate all the Alpha Laval trucks, plus any, the largest size of normal industrial truck you'd see on the road.
I will say, property owner on the south side was very pleased with the way his somewhat less-than-desirable fence was when you started and what you put back, so.
Well, that's, that's nice to hear. We certainly try.
Yes.
So with the cul-de-sac, I assume if the road ever continued on to the east, that it's, would be easy to?
That's correct, yes. It was, it was laid out in a way we can just remove the cul-de-sac part and have it straight through, or we could leave the cul-de-sac as a partial turnaround.
So talk a little bit, I saw the detention area. How big of an area will that accommodate?
That detention facility not only accommodates the full development of all Alpha Laval development underway now, plus their future development, it actually overdetained for the roadway rebuilt, so that all impervious area will be captured and knocked down to pre-development flows.
Could you talk just a second about the Alpha Laval, their construction they have going on now, and the future also? How far back do their property go, does it go, approximately?
If you can, and Michael Skates may need to come up to fill it in, but if you look at the north part of that drawing, you can see the businesses to the north there. There's an end to those businesses. That's approximately where the current Alpha Laval development ends, if I'm not mistaken. There's room for another building back there. I think they had another one planned, potentially in the future, but the parking, I think the parking goes all the way to that point right there.
Okay. So from that, that part back would be property that could be developed by somebody else, then?
No, it's all their property. And a lot of it is detention back there. They have a very large detention facility back there.
But to the south and?
Right, both sides.
Oh, to the south, oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Yeah, to the south and particularly to the east as you're looking at here. Yeah, absolutely. There's a large track of land.
That's ready to be developed also.
It is, and I remember years ago, as a consulting engineer, I actually did some preliminary layouts on that area, and part of the problem with it, it didn't have access to any major roads. We fixed that problem.
Mayor, emergency council, if I can, I ask Development Service, excuse me, Engineering, Construction, and Mr. Swab to bring this before you, because the road is essentially finished. As you can see, there's still some punchless work, what I call punchless work left to be done to close out the contract. I think it's important, because if you remember, we did an economic development agreement with Alpha Laval, which the city committed $500,000 from our sales tax capital improvement funding to complete this road, and then we went with the governor's help and got industrial access, I believe, funds. So the $1.4 million was the commitment from the state to combine with our funds to be able to build this road, so Alpha Laval, which is over the next couple of years going to bring 300 additional jobs to their operation, to our community. And so once the project's completed, Mr. Swab and Construction Engineering will put together requests for reimbursement for, for the funds, because we did forward fund this project in order to get it done, and then we'll get a reimbursement minus our, our contribution back from the state at some point, this probably the spring or early summer.
I didn't notice. Was there streetlights on that, or will there be streetlights?
No, sir. There are no streetlights on it.
I will say this, we're looking, the traffic committee's looking at, at streetlights, and we've had a brief discussion about some other areas, and should there be additional development as, as it goes, as was mentioned earlier? We'll have to go back and take a look at that, and I fully anticipate that, that will probably stimulate some development. If we do, then we'll have to put some safety and security streetlights in there.
Any more questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. Tim, thanks. Item 7B, presentation of Safe Room Rebate Program. Jamie Ott.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jamie Ott, Emergency Management Director. Wanted to give you kind of a quick update on where we're at on our Safe Room Rebate Program. Kind of give you a little bit of history of where we started from. Back in June last year, Michael Skates, Cindy Arnold, Krista Flash, Mr. Spurgeon, and I met to discuss applying for the individual Safe Room Rebate Program through FEMA. Our notice of intent was approved. This allowed Oklahoma Emergency Management to work with our city to publish the application process for our citizens to apply for this rebate program. Our communications team did a great job in getting the word out on social media and local media about our first public application meetings. It was estimated over 500 people attended both meetings. We received over 300 applications. Oklahoma Emergency Management was very excited about the turnout for these meetings and believed that our meetings were the largest attended out of all their individual Safe Room programs. After the applications were received, those applications were vetted to make sure they met the program requirements. Those program requirements were applicants had to live inside sea limits broken arrow, must own their own home or land, and not be inside a flood zone. After those applications were verified, notices were made to our floodplain management team, Department of Environmental Quality, Corps of Engineers, USDA, Natural Resources Conservation Service. Those departments verified their applicants met all of their requirements before, before being sent on to OEM and FEMA for final grant approval. At the end of February, we received a letter stating that our grant had been approved. Mr. Spurgeon signed the state and local agreement letter of our approval. We submitted 246 applications to OEM and FEMA. At that number, we received approval for 164 safe room grants with 82 alternates. The grant awarded was $328,000. Ms. Arnold, Mr. Skates, myself will be meeting in the morning to review the final process and information packets for all the wardies and alternates to be distributed at our next meeting. This meeting is mandatory meeting for all applicants to receive the information that is required to complete their process to receive the rebate check. This was truly a team effort with many departments working together to be able to offer those type of grant to our citizens in preparing for the next storm. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Were the grants of the ones selected, was it based on their timeliness of when they submitted their application, or was it random?
No. We took the applications, and I put them basically in a computer and number generator, and whatever the computer and number generator come up, that's how they were picked. There was, it was all random.
Okay.
I let the computer do the work.
So the next steps, Jamie, is for us to notify, to ultimately notify those folks that have been selected, and then the alternates, to let them know if they're interested in moving forward with the program?
Correct. We'll be sending out an email later this week or the first next week, let them know of the meeting dates. At the end of the month, we'll be meeting at the Public Safety Center. The alternates will be required to attend as well, because if for some reason those 164 that have been approved, awarded, drop out of the program, we can't communicate with them for some reason, or process where they can't continue, those alternates will move into those slots. So that way, even though they're an alternate, if something happens, they'll be able to continue into the program. Now, if we continue, if we do this program, if it's available to us, you know, later, I will keep those that are the alternates, and if we ever do the program again, those alternates will go at the top of the list.
Jamie, have you heard anything that, are they going to offer this again, or is this going to, you think it is a one-time program?
No, I think it'll be offered again. Right now, we're just waiting for Congress and appropriations to come out to figure out the funding for mitigation grants that are approved. So I'm anxiously awaiting to see what is going to be done, to see if we can apply for it.
Good.
This is extremely exciting. We have federal tax dollars coming back to our community, $300 and some thousand dollars for, without question, something that is definitely needed within our city. And so we're very excited, and I fully anticipate most of those, if not all of them, that are on the, the cut list will move forward. If not, we have, we have a large enough contingency list, and then hopefully we'll get some additional funds, and then we'll go right back through the process again.
We originally only asked for 100, but we had such a great response. Oklahoma Emergency Management, FEMA worked with us to, you know, up our number to 164. So they, they, they really helped us out and given us more than what we were asking for.
So for the sake of folks that are here tonight, exactly what are the folks that are going to be awarded some funds? They have to match the program, or how does it work, once again?
They have to pay for the safe room upfront, and then that cost of what they pay is, it'll be a percentage up to $2,000. It'll be a percentage up to $2,000 that they'll get a rebate for the cost of their storm shelter. And just according to the federal funds and the way they work, that, that has to be purchased upfront, and then we give them documentation showing that it's met FEMA-approved code, it's met our code, and that the funds have been spent. So when they're reimbursed, they are guaranteed that the funds are being used for that project and not for anything else.
What's the timeframe?
Once we have our kickoff meeting at the end of the month, we're, we're asking for 90 days, and then after the 90 days, there's one day a month, it'll be the last day of each month, for the next 90 days, to where they'll need to turn in their packets of where they've purchased the safe room and all the other documentation that's required. And then we submit to state a package of whatever's come into us once a month, and they're giving us three months to turn these packages in. So they have a little bit more than 90 days, but if they want to meet the first group of packets going in to get the refund checks quicker, it's just a, they need to get it done quicker. So, you know, it's just part of the steps that we'll work with.
Any more questions? Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, sir.
Item 7C, presentation of the new memorial park located at 709 Magnolia Court, recognition and contribution by members of the Broken Arrow community. Alex Mills?
Good evening again. Thank you. In 2015, Councilor Mike Lester began spearheading efforts to raise money through the Tulsa Community Foundation for the acquisition of property located at 709 Magnolia Court. The city of Broken Arrow accepted that deed in 2017, and staff began working with an architect to create a conceptual plan for what we know as Memorial Park. Construction began in 2018. This project was truly a community-wide effort made possible by several businesses and individuals throughout Broken Arrow. Construction was complete on or about the end of January of this year, and a ribbon cutting is scheduled for later in March, if we can find a dry day to do it. I think it's very appropriate to recognize the contributions of those community partners for this project, whether in time, money, or materials, and if we could put their list of contributors up, that would be great. Although it may take a couple minutes, I'd like to read their names. I think that'd be appropriate. Action Roofing, Advertise Anything Incorporated, Alabac Design Group, who did the plans, Arc Wrecking, B&amp;B Landscapes, the Broken Arrow Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 170, I'll come back to the city Broken Arrow staff, Kason Associates Properties, Cherokee Pride Construction, Davis Elliott Utility Contractors, Doorwork Law Firm, Ewing Irrigation Supplies, Faith Assembly, God of Church, of God Church, sorry, Greater Tulsa Association of Realtors and Northeast Oklahoma Real Estate Services, Howsmith Restaurants, Hunter Industries, Indian Springs 3 Homeowners Association, M&amp;M Lumber Company, Magnum Construction, Oklahoma Canopies and Oonings, Quick Trip, Roses Incorporated, Sanders Nursery and Berry Wholesale Nurseries, Sherwin-Williams Commercial Paint Store, number 4332, Social Vention, Tulsa Community Foundation, Waste Management Landfill, and White River Fish Market. I'd like to say, say just a brief moment about our staff. Tim Robbins, who's up here with me, acted as the construction manager for this project and did a magnificent job along with Chad Nichols on my staff in, in terms of handling the construction. Phil Hink, Chris Holder and his crew with our Parks Department, self-performed a lot of work, and I don't think we'd have nearly the product we'd have if we hadn't had those in-house forces working on it as well. We have a graphic, a flyby, correct, to show you what this park looks like, and I'd like Tim to kind of say some things about.
So I think the nice thing about this park, of how it really turned out, is the nice flat appearance of it, and how we've, we've able to give them several uses of the facilities with the beautiful gazebo that was donated and installed, and the sprawling site work that we were able to incorporate with the security lighting, as well as we were able to upgrade the park path that is down to the, the smaller park that is behind the tree line there. So we've got a nice trail that actually goes down there too, that is part of this project. The irrigation throughout will facilitate the park being able to maintain a nice green appearance and a healthy appearance to the, to the facility and just make a nice, beautiful statement. The coordination, as Alex mentioned, the construction with, with all the partners was a magnificent event of, of donated labor and donated materials and a kind of a coordination of all these events kind of coming in to, to fruition of a beautiful park such as this, so.
We'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think this, this is a great concept, and, you know, Mike will have to be given a lot of credit for this, because it was his idea. He's the one that came up with it. He's the one that contacted all the different people to volunteer and donate their time and their, and their materials to do this, and this really, you know, is something really good for our community that you've done. And I think about the fact that it started out kind of rocky. It started out with Mike was working hard on it, and then someone lit it on fire and just about slowed the whole thing down and about almost, I was surprised it killed the whole thing, but we were able to get past that. So Mike, if you want to talk about some of the things you've done there.
Yeah, I would, and, and I was first notified by a neighbor who had to get up every day and look at that house, and even before the fire, just what happened there and their relationship with some of those kids. And so it really kind of tugged at my heart, and I will tell you, my 12 years on the council, this is probably the defining project that I've been involved in. Met with the neighbors, and, and we developed a game plan, and, and quite frankly, I, I am glad that my background in, in real estate and construction kind of helped this along the way. But we, we began, and, and it wasn't only just a Broken Arrow, a large part of the contribution came from Broken Arrow, but, but also came from the metropolitan area and even received some contributions from outside Oklahoma. And so it was truly a, a community effort, the larger community. And I will tell you that I actually had made plans with ABC News to come in and do a national story on when the property was going to be demolished, on a community healing from such a traumatic experience, but when the house was set on fire, then the, the lender had to tear it down for safety reasons, so that went away. And I was actually going to use that as an opportunity, as a national fundraising for educational opportunities for the two surviving sisters. So I'm sorry that didn't happen. But I'm glad for the neighborhood, I'm glad for the community that this turned out, but it, it was truly the, the big dollars that were contributed, but also the little lady that called me, I went by, and she gave $5. So, you know, in terms of how much that meant, the $5 certainly meant as much as the $20,000 donation, so I was gratifying for that. I do want to recognize a few people that, that came together, and I will say that of the $173,000 we had allocated from the city to do this project, and I don't know how much we saved, but I'd say at least 30%. So I want to recognize tonight, and we will at the ribbon cutting, everybody, but Dan Alabac is here, stand up. B&amp;B Landscape, my son Chris, I talked into donating his labor and material. Of course, Tim Robbins with the city, Phil Hink, and I also want to mention Scott Esman. Scott's retired, but Scott was a major player in putting this all together. Tyler Beckstrom with Davis Elliott, and Clint Redwine with Magnum Construction. And if I missed anybody, stand up. I think I got everybody. So these were people that, that stepped forward, along with many others, to help make this a project that really was a labor of love for all of them. So I appreciate all your assistance, guys, and we'll recognize you again when we have the ribbon cutting, but thank you. Again, I, I was just the, kind of the person that got everybody together. It was the efforts of those that contributed to Tulsa Community Foundation, a lot of behind-the-scenes people, but it was these people and those who gave money to make it all happen. So I was proud to be a part of it and, and am thankful for a very beautiful, final, finished project.
Well, I remember, you know, that, that fateful night, and, of course, we all got the call, and that night, and my son's in the audience tonight, and we just all hugged our kids a little closer that night. And so to take what was such a terrible thing and, and turn it into a place of reflection and peace, I, I think that's been a, a great improvement for this community, and I'm thankful for all those who gave, and thankful that, Mike, you, you took that on. I'm really thankful for all those who gave and made something that was truly terrible, something that we can be reflective of. So I, I thank you all for doing that. It means a lot to this community.
I think it adds a, certainly a, deserves a quiet moment of peace as, as people look at it, certainly think of the neighbors, seeing the house that was existing there and seeing the beauty that's there now. Not that it makes up for what happened, but it does make you think and think about where you're at, where you're at in life. I will say, though, that to the first responders, I still visit with some of them about the effect that it had on them, the police and, and the fire department, both. I know the, the, the fireman that sat with the girl, I think, for three or four hours in the vehicle after this happened, and showed her videos and visited with her. He played football with my youngest son. So those first responders, they just never forget that. And so I think that, I'm hoping that that would be, as they look at that, that they'll think about the peaceful situation and that they can move on. But we have the best police and fire department in this part of the nation. I think they responded, but you want to keep in mind, just like the tragedy that happened. I think they responded, but you want to keep in mind, just like the tragedy that happened yesterday, that's something that they lived with for a long time. So I just hope this kind of shows a little bit of peace for those two departments and the response that they had.
Yes. Yeah, this is something very special for our community, I think, to try and heal, so it's really good that this was done. Next item is Item 8, Citizens' Opportunity to Prepare for the Council, and we have one person signed up, Steve Forrester.
The goal is very simple, to make Broken Arrow...
Please give name and address and speak to the microphone.
My name's Steve Forrester. I live at 2305 South First Place. The goal is very simple, to make Broken Arrow a better place. I get this door. I talked to Major Bennett. He said the number one complaint in Broken Arrow is traffic. The solution is computer simulation. The computer allows you to see actually into the future. Let's take a look at the new fire station, the planned station. These are actual photos taken November 3rd. There were actually 600 vehicles. I counted each vehicle. There were actually 600, and this is straight across from the fire station. Now, if all your vehicles go left or would be north from the event center, from the freshman academy, the national, the gas company, Street and Stormwater, you have a potential of 1,000 vehicles being wrapped around your fire station. So of course, that's a serious problem. To make it even worse, the trucks are going straight into the traffic. You don't see the truck a mile away. You don't have time to respond. They're going straight into the traffic. How bad is the danger? The danger is extreme because there's no shoulders on First Place or 91st. There's no center lane to speak of, and there's no way for the cars to pull over. Of course, here's some suggestions, pray. What we're speaking of, computer simulation, to actually widen the streets, have the police direct traffic, and find a better location. You've done the rumble strip, and that's good, but that can only see, oops, I'm sorry. That can only see the present. To actually see the future, you need the computer. Ross Ford was a state rep. He drove up and down First Place as a police officer here in Broken Arrow. When I called him, his first comment was, "They're widening First Place to five lanes, aren't they?" He drove up and down First Place. He knows what First Place is like. These companies all do research to make cars, movies, rockets. Your product would be saving lives, but you're also saving money. Instead of wasting millions of dollars, you could invest a small amount. The best news is this may all be free. They already have programs at the state level to analyze traffic, so you're saving lives, saving money. It's a win-win situation. Please consider computer simulation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Item 9A, General Counsel Business. Consideration discussion of possible approval of park name for the Memorial Park located at 709 Magnolia Court. Mr. Burge.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Counsel. The conversation, presentation that Alex Mills and Tim Robbins gave segues into a decision that we need from the City Council. And thank you for putting the fact sheet up on the screen for anyone to see. On the fact sheet, the administration is asking for direction from the governing body on an actual name for the park. Just to reiterate, is that the construction started last year and basically is now completed, and is traditionally, it's the governing body's responsibility to come up with a name so then we can brand it, make sure we put up the appropriate signage and so forth. So as a part of giving you some suggestions, we have listed four names for your consideration. Obviously, the governing body may have other names that we'd like to consider, but these are the four that we were presenting for your consideration, and I'll open it up for discussion.
So let me start, and when this first started, we had a multitude of different names. One of the things that we wanted to stay away from was using the family name more because we didn't want to present anything that thought we were doing anything for the two brothers that perpetuated this. So from my perspective, the Memorial Park and adding a D in front of Memorial Park would be that because we are, we want to hold the memory of those family members lost. We want to have the honor the two surviving sisters. And I talked to the attorney that represented the family that adopted those two girls and actually involved them in this from the very beginning as much as they wanted to be, but this was kind of the direction they wanted to go, and I said those two girls may never, they may never have the ability to come here and drive past that property, but if they do, I wanted it to be a place where they could remember their parents and siblings lost. And to a certain degree, it's to memorialize the work that our first responders did, and I draw back on my experience as a Tulsa police officer, though never experienced anything quite as horrendous as this, though do remember a couple of things that have been etched in my mind some 40 years later. I can still visualize those. So those first responders will never forget their time in that crime scene, but when they entered that and they immediately had to go into their save mode, enter their investigative mode, even as horrendous as that crime scene was. So I think that for me, calling it the Memorial Park would be the best solution.
Any other discussion, any other recommendations for names?
I agree with Mike, but I mean, in addition, I also like reflection. I know when you guys were talking about it, reflection kept being brought up as a place to go and reflect.
Well, I have to agree. I kind of, in looking at this, I kind of like reflection also to start with, and nothing against Memorial.
I'm not married to anything.
And not against Memorial, but reflection just gives you time for the future to think back on, and Memorial Park is just, you know, a reminder of the Memorial Bridge as you go into Arlington Cemetery. You know what I mean? It kind of reflects it. So I'm really okay with either one of those. I think those two would be ones that we would pick from. Personally, I kind of like reflection because it gives you time just to stop and think, as I mentioned earlier, but I'm fine with Memorial Park there also.
You know, I think that has a lot of credit to it, and I wouldn't mind that name as well.
Do we have a motion in on one of the names? Anyone have a?
I would make the motion that we call it, and I'd like to put, well, reflection park would be good for me. I would make that motion second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Speak louder.
Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
I'll make one comment, too, and I saw Mike going through this, the time he spent, and even people that were in opposition, and I appreciate him staying with this because I think is important to the community, certainly important for the neighborhood. But he deserves accolades on bringing this together, and everything wasn't real positive in it. Some people just wanted to forget it, wanted to deal away with it, wanted to build another house, but Mike stayed with it. He wanted something to, for the first responders, for the family, and I admire him for that. So he stuck with what he believed, and I think he's got a good product, and he's done a good job in leading on that.
Thanks, and thank you. We'll move to Item 9B, Consideration Discussion of Possible Approval and Direction to Publish a Legal Notice of Anixation of Volunteer Anixation of Approximately 1,240 Acres Located South of Dearborn, East of 51st Street, Evans Road. Michael.
Let me, if you came for this memorial thing tonight for the park, you don't have to stay for the rest of it. It's reflection park.
Reflection.
Reflection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Michael Skates, Development Services Director. This is a request for a legal notice of annexation for approximately 1,240 acres located in the northeast part of the city, near south of Dearborn, east of 51st, which is also Evans Road or 225th East Avenue, primarily all in Section 28, parts of Section 27, Section 33, and Section 4. These 1,240 acres are currently undeveloped, and this area is part of, was part of Fair Oaks up until January 8th, 2019, when it was de-annexed from Fair Oaks Township. The property is projected to be developed for residential, commercial, industrial, office, recreational, and mixed use. We've been working with the applicant along with our comprehensive plan consultant to incorporate this area into our upcoming revised comprehensive plan, and we're continuing those meetings tomorrow with the applicant to kind of hone in on what areas will be mixed use, what areas will be residential, as well as commercial and industrial. But we're very excited about the opportunity to work with the applicant who has come to the city looking for a future growth plan in this part of the city. I can answer any questions. I believe the applicant may be here as well if you have any questions.
My ward just grow by 1,200 acres.
Our front in the long term. Services and utilities and stuff like that, can we provide that? You know, I'm always in favor of annexation, you know. I would have always, just everything in Wayner County, I would have liked to seen it annexed so that we'd have control of it. So I'm certainly not in opposition, even though that's not in our fence line right now, I believe. Is that correct?
It's not in our fence line.
So I'm certainly not in opposition to it. I'm just wondering about the feasibility of water, of getting water up there, where the sewer's going to be taken to, and that kind of thing.
Well, this area is mostly unsuared, and so, you know, we haven't really dove into where sewer would go based on the contours of the property. That's something that will have to be looked at as we move forward, but this applicant has been successful in the past of working with Rural Water District and getting variance from them for city water. That may happen on this 1,240 acres as well. It is in Rural Water District 4, but, you know, those opportunities exist for us to provide water in lieu of Rural Water District 4, and we'll continue those conversations with the applicant moving forward.
I mean, I'm telling on that, but do we, I know one of the things we ought to provide is sewer. Is that something that we have the capability to do without building another plant? I mean, as we move forward, can we meet the, can we meet the needs of the residents who would eventually be here?
My understanding is that we can, based on the growth within the Adams Creek Basin. And so, you know, not knowing exactly what areas are going to be industrial or commercial, we have a good idea up in Section 28, you know, on the both sides of the creek turnpike. You know, those may be more the light. What we call Level 6 would be light industry, maybe heavy commercial development, and then maybe in Section 33, having a mix of commercial mix along with residential. Most of 4 probably would be residential in that nature, but, you know, I believe that we do have the capacity to sewer that area.
You know, and I know years ago, we looked at this area as a potential for an innovation district or an industrial area. I like the fact that we've got a blank canvas here that we can pretty much draw whatever we want that will benefit the growth of that part of Broken Arrow.
Well, I know, I agree, and I think the applicant's excited about the opportunity for the next 30 years of growing, not only developing their property, but growing and helping the city.
Oh, so this isn't something they're going to have done by the end of next year?
Well, and again, it puts us back in, have control of it as far as the zoning and that particular, whoever the applicant is, knows that, has worked with the city before, and so I'm excited about that. As far as I'm concerned, I feel like that we produce a quality project, so, you know, we'd stay on top of it, and as mentioned, you know, the commercial down through there and residential, so I think it strengthens the community to be able to do that.
I appreciate that, and from this point here, you know, this item, this annexation will come back to you two more times for public hearing along with preview ordinance and then finally the final ordinance.
I'd make a motion to direct the city clerk to publish a legal notice of annexation in a legally qualified newspaper at least 14 days prior to the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Item 9C, Consideration Discussion of Possible Approval and Authorization to Execute a Professional Services Contract with Broken Arrow Chamber of Commerce for Rooster Days Festival. Lori Hill.
Couldn't get down here quite fast enough. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I'm here this evening to present a professional services contract with the Broken Arrow Chamber of Commerce for the Rooster Days Festival. As we know, Rooster Days is the longest-running festival in the state of Oklahoma, and this year they're going to celebrate their 88th festival, and it'll take place May 9th through the 12th. The city and the Commission of Visitor Bureau have been longstanding supporters of this event, and so I'm here this evening to request approval for the services contract, which will be for $20,000 per festival year for 2019, 2020, and 2021, subject to annual appropriations, and funding for this would come out of the Commission of Visitor Bureau fund. And I have invited Jessica Mug with the Broken Arrow Chamber of Commerce to be here this evening in case you have any questions regarding the festival itself, but I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions for Lori or Jessica?
Well, I like this idea. Of course, anyone who knows me knows I cut my teeth on community service for Rooster Days, and I think I've often referred to it as Broken Arrow's unofficial homecoming, and I think anything that the city can do to make it a success is always a good thing. So I certainly would support this action.
So we don't have any problem with it? Is it, we're proving it for three years. I know it says "subject to annual appropriations," but there's not a problem with that?
No, council member, that's fine, "subject to annual appropriations," which goes through the budget process.
I do have a question, just Lori.
Sure.
Are we talking about, like we have the last few years since I've been here, is that the street's going to be closed?
Correct.
And going to be down by Central?
Correct.
And we've been, we've talked to several of the businesses that had expressed some concerns about the parking, and we're working with those folks. I just want to make sure counsel knows that some of the folks in the shopping center down there had some concerns about making sure there's proper signings for people that are on South Main coming north because obviously they can't get through, and so we're going to work with those businesses to make sure that folks, vehicular traffic, you know, won't be problems returning around, and we make sure they keep their access to their business. So I want to thank Ruth for her folks and Lori, and also Vonda for talking to those folks.
Correct, and that would fall under Vonda Olivera's preview as the Special Events Coordinator, but through the Special Events Committee, they look at every facet of every event as it relates to public safety, street closings, everything, so that will absolutely be reviewed.
So I remember in junior high watching the carnival come into town. I think you were already out of high school. But this has been a, for a lot of us, it's been a, has a lot of memories.
88 years.
Yeah, I'm glad that was, this was a little...
I wasn't here for that one.
You just don't want to admit it, but it has a lot of memories for a lot of us, so.
And it does for me, actually a year longer than for him, but I remember the Ferris wheel coming around and thinking, "It's way too close to the building." You can nearly reach out and touch the top of those old buildings.
I've seen the pictures.
And I said, "This isn't going to work."
I don't think that would pass right now with our public safety.
Even by then, we had to have room for the band, that's why it was moved over.
Well, I will tell you, the city would not let them when this was where the Rooster Day, where this building's sitting right now, and I was sitting there because they wouldn't let them stake the swing into the asphalt parking lot and saw it tumble over with kids on it.
My wife was on it. My mother was on it. She was. I'd make a motion, we approve and authorize execution of a contract with Broken Arrow Chamber for Rooster Day Festival.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 9D, Consideration Discussion of Possible Approval to Reject All Bids for Destruction of Need House Park Sand Volleyball Course. Alex Mills.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry to be before you to do this.
I'm sorry to be before you to do this. The city of Broken Arrow had these sand volleyball courts designed, and we put out the bid on February 4th and 11th. Seven bids were received and opened on February 26th. The lowest responsive bidder based on the base bid only, and the lowest responsible bidder based on the base bid plus one of the add alternates that we were wanting to award. Because of glitch in our language in two different places in the book, it would have been a different award. And so, we checked with legal, and for clarity's sake, we need to reject these bids and immediately go back out to bid with clear language and only one location to where there's no discrepancy of who we would award the bid to. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So is there anything changed? Is it going to be bidding the same?
No, it'll bid exactly the same project, and it was just a, when we bid projects through the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, they demand certain language as to how the bid will be awarded. Our language is a little bit different, and we just had an oversight and left the wrong language in one of our locations, and we noticed as we were opening bids, and we checked with legal to make sure there wasn't a way around it, and they didn't feel comfortable awarding the bid. So this one's on me, I apologize, but we'll go right back out to bid, and hopefully we won't get any increased prices, so.
Here's what I saw interesting, notwithstanding all of that, that two of the contractors had the exact same bid down to the penny.
Yes.
Unless that was an error on.
I thought there was 17.
No, it was both 40 cents is how they ended.
40 cents, okay.
Yeah, they were both exactly the same bid.
Oh, that's interesting.
Now, I don't know.
Oh, not the two low, okay, I got.
No, they weren't.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
It was just two bids within the process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there were some very close bids. If you look at the base bid, the two-low bids, the base bid is hundreds of dollars apart.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So when do you plan on starting this?
If you approve this tonight, I will re-advertise it right now, starting tomorrow, and we'll get this back out, and hopefully, let's see, we're being in early March, probably hopefully award the bid and be out in construction starting in May, so.
I'd make a motion to reject all bids for the E.I. Sparks Sand Volleyball Courts, project number 186023.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 9D, consideration discussion, possible approval, reappointment of Randy Cherry to City Broken Arrow Board of Adjustment for a three-year term, expire March 5th, 2022. Michael.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is the request to reappoint Randy Cherry to the Broken Arrow Board of Adjustment for a three-year term that would expire March 5th, 2022. I can answer any questions if you have any.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Randy Cherry to serve an additional three-year term on the Board of Adjustment to expire March 5th, 2022. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 9G, consideration discussion, possible approval of resolution number 1194. Alex.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Council. In 2014, citizens of Broken Arrow approved $1.4 million in a general obligation bond for the purchase and construction of land for an art center. Subsequent funding was provided by Vision 2285 surplus in the amount of $2.6 million for a total overall project funding of $4 million. We're here tonight to discuss the opportunity to, for your consideration and approval of using the construction management project delivery method on this project. If you can pull up my little deal, I'd like to give you the very high-level view of construction management and what we hope to gain out of it. Public organizations have traditionally hired architects and engineers based on qualifications and general contractors based on competitive bid. That's just always been the mentality. Why? The assumption was that AEs, like myself, use their talent, wisdom, and creativity to represent their client's fiduciary interests, where GCs deliver simply brick and mortars, product, and therefore a competitive bid makes a lot of sense. Why consider change? Well, the construction industry is driving more and more to where almost every bit of a building like this would be subcontracted. Most of the cost, technical knowledge of the manufacturer portion of the building relies in these specialty subcontractors. GCs and construction managers are now professional managers. They're skilled at estimating, purchasing, scheduling, and contract management. Noting the skill involved with that profession, owners are choosing more and more to have that skill on their side of the table, and so, not just during the construction phase. So the benefits of the construction management method would be, we would select a construction manager, very much like we would select an AE firm, based on qualifications, experience, reputation. That CM would join the team and become a collaborative member, working with the architect and engineers and the owner in the design of this building. They would provide real-time budgeting, cost estimating, scheduling, constructability reviews, do value engineering studies on the process, during the design process, which really reduces the risk both to the AE and to the owner, because we really vet these things as we go through the process. I would say that it's a fair assumption to assume we'd get a higher-quality product at a comparable or lower cost point. Construction timeframe advantages could be garnered by bidding and awarding multiple bid packages to speed time to completion. You could do a grading package, you could do a foundation package, you could do a framing package, those could all be bid independently, so you could start the construction much earlier than if you waited for the entire process of design to be complete and bidding the entire project as a whole. You limit the adversarial relationship between the AE firm and the general contractor. A lot of time, those two entities are put at odds to each other. In this case, they've collaborated the entire time, and so it's a joint effort to make sure the owner gets the best product. We reduce the risk for the client, us, by the centralization of responsibility for all the construction under a single contract. Now, you would get that during a design-bid-build sort of scenario, but as I'll talk about, this is more directed towards the commentary of CM agency, which I'll talk about here in just a second. But you will get all that, all those subcontracts, performance and payment bonds, and a guaranteed maximum price bonded by the CM-at-risk firm. This is typically done at a cost-plus-fee contract. It's normally based roughly on a percentage of construction. I've seen as low as 3%, but 4% to 6% is a little more typical in terms of percentage. There are some drawbacks to this method. The CM being at risk, in other words, if the project goes over budget, they're going to eat that difference as long as it's not a scope change. They will more thoroughly vet the subcontractors they use. Now, honestly, I think that's a good thing, but some subcontractors may feel they're being excluded from the process if they can't meet those vetting requirements, and some traditional GCs who are not equipped, staffed, or structured to provide CM services may feel they're being excluded from this project. I personally think in the event of an art center like this, with all the specialties that I'll talk about here in a second, I think those risks are minimal. There was some question about CM agency versus CM-at-risk. CM is a professional service. When you talk about CM agency, it's no skin in the game. They are like the AE firm. They provide a service, they do not manage those contracts directly, they do not take them under their umbrella, they do not provide a guaranteed maximum price, they simply act as a manager of those contracts, and sometimes that can cause problems with conflict of interest, and you end up, the owner ends up spending a lot of time managing that where if it's CM-at-risk, it's all one contact person. So I'll go back to the specifics of the project, and then I'll come back to next steps. Part of the reason that we're here tonight is that Oklahoma Statute Title 61 requires for us to get your approval to use the CM delivery method, and it also requires it for a design-build that's under the same title. And part of the requirements that are needed to qualify for this are need for cost control, a project that's in the public interest, those we meet with no problem. Where we have, would have trouble authorizing this for some of our other typical projects is that you have to have specialized construction needs or specialized construction aspects to qualify for this. And in your documents, you will see, if you can put up this, shoot, put up that page right there, you will see that we have some, what I would consider specialized spaces, and I don't think anyone on our staff has a lot of experience with these. There's going to be a wood shop, there's going to be an art gallery, there's going to be a film in sound studio with control and editing, there's going to be a dirty space for 3D animation, ceramic, sculpting, that sort of stuff, and there'll be a kiln room. Quite frankly, our staff doesn't have the expertise to manage the construction of projects like that. If you want to build a waterline or a road, we're your folks. Kilns, no. So in this case, the intent of the state statute, in our case, actually makes a lot of sense. We would appreciate the expertise of a CM that has this sort of expertise, and quite frankly, there are schools in our locale that have, Tulsa Tech, for example, has built those sorts of spaces, so we probably will be able to find some construction managers with that kind of specialized experience, and so that's what we'd be looking for. So, back to the next steps. If you would approve of this tonight, we would go out on the street, we'd issue a request for proposals, we would shortlist, we'd shortlist the people who proposed and get a top three or top five, we would interview those qualified firms, and we would interview them with a team from city staff, we would have the architect that we already have on board be part of that interview team, and we would have some of the stakeholders be part of that interview team. That would be fairly typical. We then would negotiate a fee and a contract with that firm, and then bring it back to you for your approval, likely in the May of this year timeframe. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
So it was my question about the CM and CM-at-risk, because, you know, CM's been around for a long time, CM-at-risk, not so much, but I think that's, from our perspective, was the best choice, because we have no liability once we've signed the contract. I think it brings more collaboration from our perspective in the CM working with their subs and bringing them onboard in the design of it on the front end, so when we've got a finished product, there's no changes that have to be made, so.
That's right.
I like that aspect of it. I like the, it's a team effort from everybody, and even the subs to that degree.
Well, I, you know, I have a little personal experience. Past life, I was director of facilities at Tulsa Tech, and we used CM-at-risk almost exclusively to deliver our projects, Broken Arrow Public Schools.
Right.
Uses that delivery method. It's not that uncommon around here.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. We will get a nice selection of construction manager at-risk proposals, I would suspect on this.
I think that's a good avenue for us.
I also think it's a good idea. It's something that, this is a very special facility, there's nothing, we haven't built anything like it, and it's going to be fairly unique in what we're building there, and I do think the private side has used this for several years as far as the CM-at-risk, and it's something that we're stepping into, something that they've been doing because of budget-wise is why they do it, and I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. I agree.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution number 1194 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 10's preview ordinances, there are nine. Item 11 ordinances, there are nine. Item 12, remarks and inquiries for our governing body members. One thing I have to say, I really do appreciate all the effort of all the people that got involved in the new reflection park. It's something that was a very dark day for our community, and this is a way to brighten it up a little bit, and I appreciate the effort everyone's put into this.
I agree.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
I, I'll just say, this, yesterday and today, I was at the Capitol and meeting and hearing with, from our legislators and our new governor, and it was, it was really kind of hopeful being able to hear all the great things that's taken place in the last five weeks, and he's been elected and all the new legislators that have been elected in the direction that our state is actually going, was very hopeful, so. We got to visit the mansion and see the Oklahoma-shaped pool, and then there's a big event coming up in a couple of weeks for our city on March 16th, and I thought I'd invite everybody, so.
Okay, and yes, and they did a press conference today that was very, changing how government's being managed in our state, so it's very good. Anything else? Item 13, remarks and updates by city manager, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Council. Good evening to everyone that is here in the council as well as those in attendance tonight. I do have a number of operational, community, economic development, and personnel matters I want to update the council on. As I mentioned to you a couple of meetings ago, I'm going to start formalizing my report and actually creating a new segment from our city council highlights, because we like to keep them to about five minutes, creating the city manager's report, because it is an intricate part of updating the council on things that are going on. Obviously, I stay in communication with the council members daily, and I think that there are a lot of things that I communicate, we talk about as a staff or a governing body that I'd like to put out into the public that is happening, in an effort to continue to provide maximum transparency to the things that we're doing. So the first thing I want to mention is, on the agenda earlier this evening, under the consent agenda, the city council approved and authorized an agreement for professional services to a company known as Green Rivers Associates, acting as Green River Engineering for the Highland Park Master Plan to actually build a rugby field. This is in the east part of our community. This was a bond project that was approved by voters in 2004, and the funding was in 2014, and so we're going to begin the master planning for the development of the rugby field as well as additional improvements. There's approximately $200,000 that's available for the professional services as well as the improvements, so that's going to be a nice addition. It's very close to the elementary school there, so I'm very excited about the fact the council approved that, that award of that professional service tonight. The second thing I wanted to mention, I did mention this in the Broken Arrow in motion, is that Thor Rooks with the Parks Department submitted our tourism sports video for award, and we won. We won the 2019 Texas, Oklahoma, Missouri, and Arkansas Award for Best Public Surface Announcement, it's professional videos, at the Southwest Parks and Recreation Training Institute Regional Conference. Obviously, we're trying to promote our community, promote tourism, and receiving this award had a lot of great feedback from the video that was prepared, and I wanted to thank Thor and also for Lori Hill for, I asked her to put these together, and she immediately jumped on it, and they have been recognized as, around the area for, you know, being high-quality as well as promoting our fields, because youth sports is one of our largest niches, so I want to thank her for making that happen. The next thing I wanted to report on is, this is something that I'm so excited about. Chief Berryhill came to me recently and talked to me about an initiative that he, his agency, our police department, wanted to undertake, and I'm pleased to announce that this spring, the chief and the police department will be holding its, our first-ever Citizens of Police Academy for our Spanish-speaking residents. One of the goals of Chief Berryhill for this year and the coming years is to begin and continue ongoing to reach out to those folks that are underserved within our community and make sure that we're representing everyone, and I think, obviously, this is a great opportunity. The department is kicking off the first police academy for Spanish-speaking residents. It's going to start on April 23rd. Officer Michael Peel has worked extensively with the Broken Arrow Ministerial Alliance, members of the Spanish Council for Neighborhood Safety, promoted it on social media, as well as a number of, spoken to a number of Spanish-speaking citizens within our community to promote the outreach and participation. This inaugural academy is scheduled for six consecutive Tuesday evenings, and we're going to be utilizing bilingual Broken Arrow Police Department employees, so actually It's going to start on April 23rd. Officer Michael Peel has worked extensively with the Broken Arrow Ministerial Alliance, members of the Spanish Council for Neighborhood Safety, promoted on social media as well as a number of, spoken to a number of Spanish speaking citizens within our community to promote the outreach and participation. This inaugural academy is scheduled for six consecutive Tuesday evenings and we're going to be utilizing bilingual Broken Arrow Police Department employees. So actually the folks are going to get a chance to interact with, with our folks within the agency. This is going to include dispatchers and many of our volunteers. As you know, we have several hundred volunteers that work with the police department. Once again, the goal of the academy is to improve relations between the police department and the Spanish speaking community. And we do have a lot of folks in our community that speak Spanish and we want to make sure that they have a level of comfort and trust with our police department should they need us. I want to thank the chief who's in the audience tonight and just for actually taking, taking this initiative and kicking it off and certainly want to involve the council and we will keep you posted as we move forward with the academy. Next, our focus newsletter. We continue to provide two inserts. The focus this time, really two topics. First and foremost, it was a focus on public safety. Obviously, we recently received a designation as being one of the safest communities in America, over 100,000. This edition that goes out in our utility bills, the top story is Broken Arrow and Tulsa Fire Conduct Joint Training. I think it's very important. I'm a thousand percent believer in both mutual and automatic aid and the importance of making sure that we are working with the communities around us, helping them, them helping us. For example, in the fire that took place unfortunately yesterday, temporarily, we had City of Tulsa Fire Department vehicles in two of our stations helping us while our firefighters were on the scene. They were here for about an hour or so, making sure that our city was continued to be protected when that happens. And there's also some additional stories in there about other aspects of public safety. The second one, which the council members asked me to prepare, was more about how the city council manager form of government works. I mean, obviously, when you have a city of 115,000 folks, 30 some thousand utility customers, sometimes there's questions about how does the form of government work? How does, how does a city council meeting work? And there's going to be a whole nother segment in the focus talking about exactly how the city council runs a meeting. How does the consent agenda work, for example, general business? Because what happens is, is you all get your packets usually on Friday and I know you read them because I get dozens of questions on Monday, okay? And so the public sometimes just see you actually going through this and voting. However, it's not that way. You know, what happens is, Council Wimpy being the newest member of council, she leads in questions asked, okay, right now. But for most part, we, everybody gets the question. So if she, if she asks questions or it's the mayor, Councilman Parks, whatever the responses are, Jennifer sends all of the responses to the council members because some of you can't look at your packets on Friday and maybe not be till, you know, Monday or so based on your schedule. But I think the folks are going to find this very helpful to learn more about our form of government. I do have a few economic development announcements I want to make. I want to start off with something that I am very excited about. I'd ask Norm if he would come forward to introduce the new vice president of economic development for the Broken Arrow Chamber of Commerce, EDC.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and council members. In a couple of weeks, I will come before you and do a presentation on city manager and my efforts towards regionalism in economic development in Wagner County. We think it's very, very important and we're excited about the things that are happening and we will present that information to you. When, about three years ago, when I came to the city manager and told him some of the things I wanted to try to do, he blessed me to go out and seek knowledge and that's what I did. And the first person that I called was a person who I knew through Economic Development channels named Darla Heller. Darla has worked in Wagner County, she has worked in all over the state of Oklahoma doing economic development. And I've always been very, very impressed with Darla. I sat down with her and just peppered her with questions and she was able to give me tremendous insight in the direction to go. As we've gone through a transition with the Economic Development Corporation, we've had the opportunity, or they have had the opportunity to hire some new staff and I am very, very pleased to announce that on March 1st, Rob Whitlock, who's in the office, he's the chairman of the Broken Arrow Economic Development Corporation, they hired Darla Heller to fill the position of Vice President of Economic Development. And she began working last Friday. The, I couldn't be more excited. I can't think of anybody in economic development who will do a finer job, who has a broader base of knowledge and who gets it, who gets partnerships, who gets regionalism and gets manufacturing and also who knows retail and is excited to be a part of it. If it's okay with you, Mr. City Major, I'd like to invite Darla up and allow her to address council.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, Norm and thank you, Mr. Spurgeon, Mayor, Council for the opportunity to speak in front of you this evening. Again, my name is Darla Heller, been on the job now three days and excited about this opportunity. Like Norm mentioned to you, I have worked in economic development for about 18 years, worked in a county capacity there in Wagner County where I live. I worked for the State Department of Commerce for several years and for the last couple of years worked as the executive director for a regional economic development effort that covered 14 counties of northeast Oklahoma, of which Wagner County and all of the eastern side of the state was included in. I'm excited about the opportunity to be working on a community level on a city as prestigious as Broken Arrow is. I look forward to working with the EDC Board as well as the Chamber to make sure that those deliverables that you outlined in that contract that you have with those organizations are met in terms of economic development, retail, as well as industrial recruitment, retention, tourism, entrepreneurship and all those levels. I hope to be, I approach every endeavor that I take on from a servant standpoint and I hope to be a servant to all of you. So, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Darla?
Questions?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Norm, thanks Darla. Little bit later on this evening, Norm is going to come before the city council and give you an update on our business retention and engagement program that we are implementing as part of our new economic development model. So I'm looking forward to having Norm come back to the podium to present to beta exactly where we are. I also wanted to mention something that I, it's very exciting for our community. I've decided that, working with our directors, to reestablish our community service program. About, according to Phil Hink, about 15 years ago, up until about 15 years ago, I should say, the city had a community service program working with municipal court and they went away from that. And so as a part of a pilot program, I'm going to initiate a community service program that's going to run from April to October of this year. We're going to pick out one day per week and then probably a couple of Saturdays per month and we're going to allow the defendants that go see the judge, the opportunity to act, to actually work community service in lieu of basically paying their fines. And our focus is going to be more specifically on litter removal and beautification. The program's going to be supervised by Curtis Spring, our city clerk and his team in municipal court, and Rocky Hinkle and Phil Hinks and the soon new Parks Director will actually be the individuals that will be working with those folks that choose to participate in the program. Our goal is to, once again, is to continue to beautify our city and, you know, obviously the wind blows here, so you can have a street that's clean today and two days later, half the trash and Broken Arrow will end up on that street. It's just unfortunately the way it is. So we want to make sure that our entrances are attractive and this is an opportunity to help both, both those defendants as well as the city with beautification. So I want to let the council know and I'll keep you posted on the days once we pick those out, but it is going to start in April and then it'll run through October. Then we'll do an after action report, determine what worked, what changes we need to make and then we'll actually implement the program, probably going to run from April to October every year in the time of season where people can get out on the, on one day a week or on the weekends and actually get something done. I wanted to mention, with regard to the Parks and Recreation Director recruitment, with the help of Kenny Schwab, our Assistant City Manager of Operations and Jeanette McCormick, I have narrowed the candidates for our next director down to four. And later this week, those four candidates are going to be in Broken Arrow for face-to-face interviews. The goal is to select two finalists for the position and because of the importance of this position, I fully anticipate that the selection team is actually going to travel to the communities of those two finalists to actually take a look at their parks improvements, finish the final face-to-face interviews. And then my goal is to, is to, with the help of Mr. Schwab, because it's his division, is to select our new Parks and Recreation Director by the end of this month or in early April. I also wanted to mention that, this is really cool, upcoming, there's a flood, there's a National Flood Plane Management Forum that's going to be held in Washington DC on March 12th and 13th. And Jeff Bigby, our Flood Plane Manager, everybody loves and knows and loves Jeff, is actually been asked to participate and possibly present at the, at that national forum in Washington. His trip's going to be paid for by the Oklahoma Flood Plane Managers Association, but I think it's awesome that we have someone recognized that can actually go and present at a national level. So I want to thank Kenny and I want to recognize Jeff for, for his leadership in the area of stormwater management. Also, Mr. Schwab and Chuck Voges are utility director. They made the selection of Travis Shimonia to take Jerry Handwinkle's position. As you know, Jerry was promoted recently. Travis Shimonia is going to be, to be, hold the position of utilities water supervisor, excuse me, water division supervisor. I've met with Travis and I think he's the right person for the position, so great choice, Kenny, Chuck. The last thing I want to mention, I do want to make sure that we do have a discussion about the recent announcement by Reesers. As the council members know, just a couple of weeks ago, the, Jeff Reeser with Reesers announced that they would be closing the store at New Orleans in Elm Place. I wanted to assure the council members that we have already spoken to Mr. Reeser about his interest in, in South Broken Arrow and he has assured us that he is ready to continue those conversations with the city. He is, he is very much interested and basically told us he's very committed to actually putting a store in South Broken Arrow and would like to work with the city and trying to find the right location. And we have assured him that the council is very interested in working with him as well. And so those conversations are going to continue. So I wanted to make sure that I brought this up to see if there's any questions the council may have about this. I mean, obviously, we're disappointed in the decision because, you know, we don't want to lose any business. And it just continues the criticisms about South Broken Arrow whenever the city has made, trying to create the best environment for, for those that want to make private investments. And so when you lose a business of this importance, it's hard, it's very difficult. However, I just want to assure the public and the council is that we've had good conversations with Mr. Reeser, we've had good conversations with Danny Signorelli and I think those conversations are going to continue.
And also the conversations you had, I know with Reesers has been ongoing for a year or two also. It's not just something that's come up in the last week or two.
No, I actually had conversations with Mr. Reeser a couple of times last year and Norm's been speaking to him for several years about what's he going to do. And obviously, the fact that he came out with an email to all the customers, and I know he had hundreds of folks that contacted him expressing their concern about the closure, he put out an email explaining that it was purely a business decision, the fact that that building simply did not work for the model that he uses. And when we met with him recently, he explained to us the type of prototype, that store that he's looking for, which is similar to size for the one we have in North Broken Arrow, as well as a couple of other stores that he has, very similar to one on Peoria as well as Lewis. And he's, he's very interested, he understands that there's, there's a customer base that obviously could be lost if in fact he doesn't put a store there. And so that was purely a business decision. However, the city, the city understands that was that decision, but we're not going to just stop because he's not going to be there. We still want to continue to try to find a location for him. We did talk to him about the possibility of providing incentives and I told him I would come back to the council, but he said, based on the model and the cost and the margin that goes along with groceries, that store just did not work for him. So he is though, very interested and I'd be glad to answer any other questions the council have, otherwise I'll keep you posted as we continue those conversations.
Any questions, Mr. Spurgeon, over anything he addressed?
Well, I, one, I want to thank you and Norm for continuing those discussions. I know this has been on the Reesers thing, something that's, that's, you've been working long and hard on and I know that'll continue, so thank you. The other thing is, on the community service program, re-implementing that, I, I'm glad to see that as a, as a young lawyer, 20 years ago or so, I was cutting my teeth on, on a little bit of criminal work down in the municipal courts. And one of the, one of the benefits of that was when you have a young, a young person or even someone who's got a little age on them who failed to, you know, did it messed up in some way or another, it was nice to have that opportunity for them to say, you know, especially if they didn't have financial means, I can do this. I can repay my debt and this mistake in this way. And so I'm glad to see this. I'm anxious to see how it goes because I think, I think it allows, it gives, it's another option for executing justice that can be a positive for both the community and the person who's the defendant. So I'm glad to hear that, I'm anxious to see how it goes.
We are too. I want to thank Curtis and Russell, as Judge Edgar is fully in support of this, he, for the very same reasons that you talked about, Councilman, Vice Mayor. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about it and I, I'm very happy with Phil and Rocky and Curtis jumping in and basically saying, we're going to make this happen.
Any other comments? Thank you. Item 14's executive session, I'd entertain a brief recess to go into Bama and Beta.
Shall move.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. I'll call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority Meeting to Porter. Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Udi.
Here.
Thurman.
Here. Item 3 is consideration of consent agenda, are there any items to be removed?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item 5, public hearings, appeals, presentation, recognitions and award. Presentation by General Services Director in regards to initial recycling pilot project survey results. Lee.
Meeting Chairman, Authority Members, Lee's our General Services Director. Well, it's been two weeks or a month since we started our pilot projects and we got a whole month of data. Tonight, I'd like to share a little bit of that data with you and also go over some high points of a survey that we conducted a couple of months ago from the residents in that pilot project. Just to give you a quick idea, so far from the roughly 1,100 residents, we've already collected 16.48 tons of recyclables from them, while at the same time, we've collected 74.83 tons of trash. So we effectively have a 22% diversion rate, which is really pretty good. One of the biggest problems that our processor says that we're having is the number of plastic bags that are in our recyclables. And so we're working to try to correct that, but even so, he estimates we have about a 10% contamination rate. The, the national average is about 21%. So we are actually coming across as a pretty green, a pretty good clean recyclables from our pilot project thus far. So right now, I'd like to switch over to a little spreadsheet here and just show you some numbers real quickly of the two different pilot projects. I know there's a lot of numbers up here, but I just wanted to show you briefly what we've got here. So right here is the two cart area in this column here and over here is the one cart area. These columns right here represent the weeks of pickup right here. And then these are the items that we're measuring and gathering data on, which includes the pounds of recycled material, pounds of trash, average pounds and so on and so forth. So in the middle here, I wanted to show you, this is the column I'm concentrating on right here is averages and the comparison between the two pilot projects. And that's what I'll just discuss real briefly. You have to note that on a two cart pilot project, we have 575 accounts. We've got a little bit less on the one cart, which is 525. But so far, the one cart pilot project is averaging 500 pounds more per month of recyclables that we collect. At the same time, the two cart pilot project is generating more trash than the one cart pilot project is. So on average, the two cart pilot project is averaging 5.24 pounds per month, per household of recycles, whereas the one cart is 6.85. And of course, average pounds of trash is, matches with the, is a little bit less as well. Set out rates, 46% on the two cart pilot project are setting out their carts for recyclables, whereas in the one cart, we're at 50, almost 51%, a little bit better average. Trash set out rates are almost identical. And then the rest of this is about the time it takes to complete the routes, where obviously total route time on average for the two carts is seven hours to pick them up, whereas in the one cart, it's six hours. Of course, this is a little faster because we're picking up bags instead of two sets of carts. set their bags, trash out in bags. And we have, on average, 21 homes that set trash out besides their cart on top of that. And those that do, the average number of bags sitting outside the cart is about 3.46. So, just some nice numbers to take a look at so you can kind of compare how they're doing. And of course, later on, our consultant will work with us on this and put these numbers together, what they really mean, and how you can have a good comparison between how the two pilot project works, two pilot projects are working. So, next, I'd like to switch over to the survey that was done. Now, the survey was conducted between February 11th and February 19th, and we had a 15% response rate. Now, the survey, Sooner Poll, had said that's a very good response rate. It's double than what they expected. Of this, we had 152 people that participated in the first survey. And so, as we're scrolling down, I'd like to start with question number seven. Now, question number seven is in the first section, which deals with questions about recycling. And number seven states, "How important or unimportant do you believe recycling is in your community?" And you can see here that if you add the numbers up there, we have almost 93% of the residents polled said that recycling is very important for our community. The next question, number eight, is "How satisfied are you with the recycling pilot program so far?" We have 89% say they're either neutral or very satisfied with the program. Moving further down, I'd like to move on to Section 2, number 18, and this is questions to our customers about the carts themselves. In this one here, this involves the residents that had both the trash cart and the recycling cart. And there were 76 people that responded to this question. Number 18 asks, "Compared to the trash bags, how do you like the trash and recycle carts?" And the first three, the greatly prefer, somewhat prefer, don't know, is almost 72% of the people. So, it's looking like they're very receptive to having the carts and using them. Number 18, "Do you feel like one recycling cart is enough to meet your needs?" And of course, it's all about yes or no. And you see, it's a very high percentage. 82.9% feel the cart is properly sized. Number 20, "Do you think one trash cart is enough to meet your needs?" And there again, 88% of the respondents feel the cart is appropriately sized for their use. And then the next question, which follows that, is "Would a smaller trash cart be preferable?" And 60% said no, 22% said yes, but I think a lot of that is going to depend on how much you actually are recycling. Because the more you recycle, the less room you need in your trash cart. Moving on to the next one, number 22, which is interesting, and I think we wanted to know, is, "Where at home are you keeping your trash and recycling carts?" And based on this respondent, 51% of the people are keeping them in the front yard of their house, while the other 42% are keeping them in the garage. And that's typically what we see when we drive through the neighborhoods. 23 is, "Do you feel you have space for the cart?" You can look at the, and I'll make a note here, the percentages up there, the number on the left column is the number of respondents, the number on the right is a percentage. I failed to mention that because I might be confused. But here you see, 67% say there's plenty of space for the carts, and two said the carts fit, but there's not much extra space. And then a small number said, "They just take up too much space." Moving on down to the next section, where it says, "Customers with recycling carts only," we'll kind of review these similar questions here for those folks. Is, the question's worded a little bit differently, but "Do you have a favorable/unfavorable opinion of the recycling cart so far?" And there again, you can see on the right, a majority of the people are very favorable of using the recyclable cart. Next question is, "Do you feel like one recycling cart is enough to meet your needs?" 96% said, "Yes, it is." Next question, "Where do you keep your recycling cart?" Very similar, 44 in the front yard, 38% in the garage. And of course, another question similar to it is, "Do you feel you have adequate space for your cart?" Again, 89, this one is often more because they only have one cart, but most of the people said, "Yeah, they have plenty of space for that, for that particular cart." Moving on down, on Section 3, I'd like to move on to number 32, and this was for all the customers. Number 32 states, "Is how satisfied or unsatisfied are you with the once-a-week trash and recycling collection?" And on the first three, which is either very satisfied, somewhat satisfied, or don't know, that is 84% of the respondents, which is very surprising that they were very receptive to the once-a-week pickup. So, it's going along very nicely. 34, "Do you agree or disagree that having trash and recycling collection on the same day is preferable to having it on separate days?" And of course, almost everybody said they strongly agreed or did agree that having it on the same day was preferable. Next, last thing I want to talk about is Section 4 and demographics. Just taking a look at the age of the people that were responding, you can see it says, "Into which of the categories do you fall?" You notice that a good number of the people, a majority of them are from 45 to 65 and over, which is an older population of our group. And it's interesting to note that these people seem to be very satisfied with the program, yet that same demographic people were also at our public meetings, sometimes voicing opposition to it. So, I think we're getting a little different glimpse than we would from the public meeting. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Of course, there's a lot more questions in here to review, but these are the ones that I thought were the most interesting and might answer any of the questions you may have.
Any questions, Lee?
I mean, just looking, going through it, that most people were satisfied with one program or the other.
Yes.
When will you do another survey?
We will do another survey in, middle of March, we will be doing a audit of the recycled materials. So, we're going to find out at that point, how much of the material is cardboard, how much is plastic, how much is contaminants, how much is glass. Following that, we also recently gave them totes with some educational materials. So, I think in probably another two or three weeks, they'll be running another survey. We have got with the consultant and the surveyor and revised some of these questions, make some of them more meaningful, and also to change and add some questions, particularly concerning the totes that we delivered, and their knowledge or instruction on what they should recycle. So, it's my understanding, we will survey them four or five times during the course of the survey and see what trend is happening.
More questions? Okay, thank you, Lee.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
We have no general authority business. I entertain a brief motion to go into the, table this meeting and go into Executive, or go into Economic Development Authority and, because we have an executive session.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. I'll call the Broken Economic Development Authority Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Item 3 is Consideration of Consent Agenda. Any items to be removed?
Move for approval, consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 5 is Public Hearings Appeals, Presentation, Recognitions and Awards. We have a presentation by the Broken Economic Development Manager on Business Retention and Engagement Program. Norm?
Good evening, Norm Stevens, Economic Development Manager for the city. On December 18th, 2018, this authority agreed to terminate the existing contract for downtown redevelopment services between Beta and the Broken Arrow Economic Development Corporation. If you recall, during that meeting, Mr. Spurgeon reported that preliminary planning had begun regarding implementing a fully functional business retention program. I can tell you that going back to when Mr. Spurgeon had his surgery in November, that I could tell as he was healing, how many texts and messages that we were exchanging about this program as this idea was being brought about and we were brainstorming on the way to not only bring it before the board, but to implement it. We decided that the funds from that terminated agreement would be used to hire two individuals to be responsible for certain areas within Broken Arrow, and a program would be developed regarding business recruitment and retention. We are constantly out trying to recruit new businesses, both manufacturing and retail into our city, and sometimes they come along, like the Alpha Laval project you heard about earlier from Alex Mills. But those are few and far between. They're very, very difficult to do. What we know from experience is that spending time in the businesses of existing businesses and helping those businesses be successful, helping them to expand, and helping them to get to know people in similar disciplines as they are, that they can buy products or sell products, will serve a tremendous benefit for our city. Throughout January and February, staff created job descriptions for the Business Retention and Expansion Coordinator and started accepting applications in late February. The city manager and the Economic Development Manager, along with senior staff, met with department directors during February, and we introduced the BRNE program. And we visited with each about them and we sought their input on what they can do to promote economic development within their department and to benefit the entire organization. Considerable amount of time was spent doing this. Staff from the Tourism Department and the BRNE coordinators will function in a much more collaborative environment under the direction of the Economic Development Manager. On March 1st, Tourism Department began relocating to 111 East Commercial Street, which will allow them to have a greater presence on, in the Rose District closer to Main Street. We've already started a program just in the Rose District where staff is going out, meeting with merchants, meeting with business owners in the Rose District, all of them. No one is discounted. And we are introducing ourselves to them and we're listening. We're spending time with them, learning what they need and what we can do to help them be more successful. We've also are bringing things back to the department heads, if it's in their area of responsibility, on issues that the merchants see that perhaps we don't, and they are being corrected immediately. Through the implementation of the ongoing BRNE program, staff will focus on retention, expansion of local business. And that's not just within the Rose District. Our goal is that we will spread this out, beginning as early as May 1st, when we get up to full staff, meeting with businesses in our community, manufacturing and others, and retail, learning about those businesses and sharing information with them. As far as the Rose District is concerned, on March 14th, we will be holding a breakfast, and everyone who has a business or is represented in the Rose District is being invited. We are reaching out in multiple ways in order to invite them to that breakfast, introduce ourselves, let them know what we are doing, and to listen to them and what they are saying. In an effort to reach all members of the Rose District, a considerable amount of time will be spent there, and it will be done by the entire staff that is both tourism and the BRNE program. The BRNE coordinators will spend a great deal of their time in the community, and they, their meetings will be set up by an administrative technician that we will be hiring in conjunction with Tourism Department on a 50/50 basis that will work for both sides, so that it will allow the BRNE coordinators to spend more time in our community. Our goal is, is that we are going to be a greater service to the people who are conducting business. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions, Norm?
And this is not, as I understand it, limited to retail establishments. This is any existing business.
Absolutely.
To see what their needs are.
Absolutely.
And furthermore, my understanding is, while the offices are located in the Rose District, this is a citywide initiative.
Yes, sir.
That will be taking place everywhere, north, south, east, west.
Yes, sir. We recognize that what we had been, or this board had been funding for the Rose District needed to be happening throughout our entire city. And so, we are just trying to amp up our efforts to greater serve our community.
Yeah, let me just add, I mean, very well done, Norm. I appreciate you. And I did text him incessantly during the month of November about this, because it's very important. I mean, I think everyone would agree that economic development would be the equivalent of the fuel that basically drives, runs the engine. That engine being the City of Broken Arrow Municipal Government to provide the outstanding services that we provide. The more fuel we have for the engine, the more sustained we are, or actually allows us to increase the number, types of services we provide our community. You know, this only works when you have the partnership we have with the EDC and the fact that we reworked that model to where their focus, really, is a couple of areas. Number one is that, you know, we are recruiting for the new executive director. That probably, the person probably won't be here realistically until late spring. We have DARL, so their focus really is going to be trying to grow their membership and why it's important to be a member of the Chamber. And secondly, is with the larger manufacturers and industrial, the high-tech businesses we have in town, and making sure that those that employ a lot of people, that we're helping them expand as well. And if there's opportunities to do so, then basically, I think it's important to have an Economic Development Commission Corporation like we have that's out there doing that. Norm is correct. And today, with the changes that we're seeing in retail, how people are shopping, I mean, it's very similar to what it was like in the 80s, in my opinion, where people started changing the way they were shopping back then, where they were going. Actually, the larger retailers, that's when people started going there, going away from Main Street in some way. Well, now people are coming back to that. However, there's still a flux about exactly how people are going to spend their money for retail and commercial dollars. And with the internet, although we're still getting, or being able to capture the sales tax now, as a result of the Supreme Court decision last year, brick and mortar is still very important. We want to make sure that we're out all over town because there, I believe there are small businesses that need to hear what we could do to help them, whether that's networking, because there may be other small businesses across town that do something similar. There could be cooperative in purchasing. There could be, one company needs something manufactured, they're having manufactured somewhere else around the country or the world, and there may be someone in Broken Arrow that can actually manufacture that product for them. And you put those synergies together, and you actually could be the potential to retain and to increase the number of jobs that exist in one or both of those businesses. But this only works if the Chamber's focusing on their end, which I know they will, and the city focusing on our end and working together, and hopefully growing, growing the community, growing our, the Chamber as well, because that's our business sector. I mean, that's our other partner. I mean, our school district, our Chamber in the city is that proverbial three-legged stool, and it's all got to be working. And if you look at the quality of, what I see the Chamber doing right now with the folks that they've hired recently and the others in new roles, I think they're heading in the right direction. And so, they get a new president with DARL and with this program, I think we're going to continue to have success because, just because there's been some turnover in the Chamber, doesn't mean the door hasn't still stopped, or the phones hasn't stopped ringing, or if people are still knocking on our door, wanting to actually locate businesses here or expand.
I'm loving this new program. Coming, as being a previous retail owner, I've always said that brick and mortar is about the experience, and online is about convenience. But people still look for that. So, I love that we're looking for ways to help them make their business better and give them tips and, you know, be there as a resource to help them grow their business.
It is a different environment, and we're seeing that with the people and the developers who we talk to. Retail's not dead. Amazon can only do so much. Brick and mortar's still going to carry retail, and we need to be in touch with them.
Well, and I think, as my question's probably alluded, I think it's important also to understand that your professional doctors, lawyers, CPAs, other service providers, IT providers and things, they provide jobs.
Absolutely.
Which is, provides the ability for people to go to the retail shops and spend a sales tax. So, I like the idea of reaching out to all types of businesses and retaining, understanding the importance of retaining each type of business. And I also am very supportive of going out through the whole community abroad, because I think, you know, it allows us, what the needs in one part of town may not mirror the needs in the other part of town, but it, but we can be responsive to the needs in each part of town and figure out what's needed, you know, what's making that business successful, what's, what do they view as a detriment, so that the city can be responsive. And I know we already do that, but I think expanding that out, I'm, like Counselor Wimpy, I'm very excited about this program.
I believe that with this- I believe with this program, along with the direction that we're getting, and we have in the relationship with the Economic Development Corporation, you're seeing a more well-rounded approach to economic development than perhaps we've ever done.
Really, it was just an update for the council members, let you know, is that the, we advertised for the, the two positions and probably start in doing interviews late next month, and I'm sure that Norm will have recommendations probably in the middle of April, and then we're going to hit the ground running as soon as those people get through their, get hired and get through their orientation.
That's good.
Good job.
Any more questions? Okay, might as well stay there, Norm. Move to item six, General Authority Business. Consideration discussion, possible approval of the First Amendment to the Contract for Economic Development Services between the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority and Broken Arrow Economic Development Corporation. Norm?
Thanks, sir. Also on the December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen Economic Development Authority meeting, you all approved a contract for economic development services with the Oklahoma, or I'm sorry, the Broken Arrow Economic Development Corporation for the period of January first, two thousand and nineteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, in the amount of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars per month. The payment will begin upon the employment of a permanent president to the BAEDC. In the interim, the contract was written out that the monthly payment shall be six thousand, seven hundred dollars per month. On February eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, the Broken Arrow Chamber and the Economic Development Corporation announced the hiring of Mrs. Darla Heller as the Vice President of Economic Development. It was our, the original intent of the board of the Broken Arrow Economic Development Corporation that they would hire the new president, allow that new president to hire the, the Vice President of Economic Development. Whenever it became known that Ms. Heller was interested in possibly coming over, and for the need that we had to continue to grow our economic development, the board decided that it would go ahead and offer employment to Ms. Heller. I remember whenever the board was interviewing Ms. Heller, they asked, you know, we don't have a president in place yet, how do you think that would work? And she said in her current capacity that she was answering to twenty-two board members. She said, I think if I can please twenty-two board members, I can please the next president that you bring in. Once again, Darla joined the Economic Development Corporation on March first, two thousand and nineteen. During the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen EDC Board Meeting, Board Chairman Rob Whitlock and Acting Chamber President Ruth Littifield requested the authority increase the amount of the contract services to fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars due to the monthly contract, or the monthly addition of Darla's compensation package, which was eight, a little over eight thousand dollars per month, and that salary and benefits. During the further discussion, board members agreed to recommend increasing the amount and recommend to this, this body, increasing that amount to twenty thousand per month to cover additional expenses. Over the course of the last month or two, they've had expenses related to the audits seventeen for two thousand and seventeen, following the Crawford Report Audit of two thousand and eighteen, the grounds for development piece that we use at the economic development conferences we go to, membership dues, travel, and items like that. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Any questions of Norm?
I had a couple of questions from council members about the need, and so I'm just going to make sure everybody understands, is that obviously they have day-to-day operational expenses, which the EDC needs to actually participate, and we worked, Ruth is in the audience, we worked with Ruth on, on what those are. And obviously, you know, the direction of the council was not to get up to the thirty-two and some change until sometime as we had an executive director. There are expenses associated beyond the compensation package for, for the senior vice president. So really, you're going from, you know, six, six thousand, seven hundred to around sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars in the additional cost. That's why I basically said that one of the charges they have is they have to work with the Department of Commerce for a contribution connected with an economic development trip they're going to be taking this summer. So the first payment is due in that. So really, this is essentially just covering, covering the expenses they have for the next three months beyond her compensation package.
And are we up to date on the monthly activity reports?
Yes. On the, the, if you remember, the, the contract that we had for the Rose District contract runs through, I believe, March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. On that particular contract, they, they do provide the actual expenses, every expense to justify the amount that is being requested. They've done that for January, and they provided the, with the invoice, the actual expenses. As far as February, we have not received their invoice for it yet because we're just entering into March, but I expect to get it in the next few days, and we, we review that quite thoroughly.
You know, I think the things that we've talked about, that you've discussed, and this particular issue with the chamber, I think the collaboration going forward shows great deal of promise.
Yes, sir.
That, that we're going to do a lot of good things for not only the business community, but providing opportunities for the citizens.
Yes, sir.
I think it's long been held that, as the city manager alluded to, the, the three-legged stool that, that this community's found success with, the, the chamber, the, the schools in the city, and, and I think, you know, it's always been, I think, the perspective of this council and proceeding councils, that, that we want to do what we can to support the business community through this type of, of operation. So I think, you know, makes sense. And what they're asking seems to be in line with what, with what we've envisioned about this anyway, so. I would make a motion to approve the amended agreement to the Contract for Economic Development Services between the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority and the Broken Arrow Economic Development Corporation.
Second. Motion's second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Item six B, consideration discussion, possible approval and authorization to execute the financial agree, advisor service agreement with Municipal Finance Services for services related to refinance and tax increment finance debt.
Cindy?
Good evening. Last commission meeting, we did a presentation on the TIF District, and we discussed the debt, and, well, it's come to light that we may have an opportunity to refinance it. Right now, we are at a variable rate, and we are looking at possibly financing to a fixed rate with some other options. We have two agreements on the council meeting tonight. First one is for the financial advisor, which has been, which you have met before previously. And the other one is the, for bond counsel is the Public Finance Law Group. We have Alan Brooks and Nate Ellis with us tonight. In order to move forward on the refinancing of the TIF debt, we would need to execute these agreements with the two entities, and then the next council meeting, we will bring back the recommendations, and then you vote if you want to move forward.
I think I saw this in somewhere, that we're talking about a, almost a full percentage drop in six, and it's fixed.
Yes, because right now we're live or plus two, and it's running about four point eight seven, and we really could possibly refinance to about three and a half at a fixed rate.
And, and that fixed interests me a lot, because we don't worry about fluctuations.
That is correct.
The other thing is, I understand, I mean, that will, I know there's a cost with doing this, but that, over time, saving that one percent and fixing it could be dramatic savings in the long run.
Yeah, absolutely. We're going to talk a little bit more about that. Is, you want to talk about the potential savings?
And some of the goals of the refinancing of the two thousand and ten note is to fix rate interest maturity, lower the interest rate, shorten the terms by approximately three years, increase debt service to a little under one million dollars annually, secure the note with TIF revenues, add velour and sales tax. If you remember back in two thousand and ten, we pledged one-eighth of our sales tax. That would be possibly could be removed. Reduce the size of the debt service reserve fund and reduce total debt service. And Ben can answer more questions on the analysis. And he's.
Just to let you know, to answer your question, Mr. Udi, I do think there is significant potential for savings here. And what I, what my hope is, is that we come back in the nineteenth with kind of a, more of a cooked package ready for your review, and I, I think you'll like it.
I mean, my theory is if we can save the people money, we have some kind of duty to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, just, just to kind of, for everybody who wasn't on, when we did this note in two thousand and ten, the TIF District was in its infancy. I mean, it was kind of an idea, and TIF districts are notoriously hard to finance. And with, this, this TIF District has been phenomenally successful. In fact, it's one of the ones I point to across the state when I'm talking to city leaders across the state of TIF districts that have done what they were supposed to have done. TIF District One of Oklahoma, Broken Arrow, has been excellent. We've seen a significant increase in ad valorem tax and, and sales tax in the TIF, and at, at this point now, it's matured to a point where we think it makes sense to release the sales tax lien, just secure it on the TIF revenues themselves. Take, when we did the original financing on the two thousand and ten note, that variable rate was in the twos. Well, now it's in the high fours. And so I think now is an appropriate time to look at fixing it significantly below four point, it's right now it's at four point eight seven. I'm looking probably for something in the mid threes. And that's a taxable rate, that's not tax exempt, so if it was tax exempt, it'd be even lower, but we don't want to go there because we want to do a taxable deal, believe me. So, but we're going to be able to, I think, lower the interest rate, shorten it significantly, maybe three years, and just gross savings, just to throw it out there, nine hundred thousand dollars. Okay? So I, I think it's, I think when you see it, it'll make sense, but we're just not quite ready to present it to you.
I recommend the, the authority allow finance to move forward, come back with the recommendation to, to the, to the authority.
Do you have any more questions?
Make a motion to approve and authorize execution of the Financial Advisor Service Agreement with Municipal Finance Services Inc.
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes. Okay, item C, consideration discussion, possible approval and authorization to execute legal services agreement with Public Finance Law Group, PLLC, for services related to refinance and tax increment finance debt.
Cindy?
Just like any other refinance, we need bond counsel, and Public Finance Law Group has experience with the TIF, and as I introduced Alan Brooks and Nate, they will be handling it if you approve the contract tonight.
Any questions?
I make a motion to approve and authorize execution of legal service agreement with Public Finance Law Group, PLLC.
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven, we have an executive session, so I entertain a brief motion for a brief recess to clear the room for executive session.
Second. Don't move. Second.
Motion's second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Udi.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Yeah, it was. Nice.
So executive session takes fifteen minutes, right?
Promise, yeah.